Welcome everyone. In attendance is the full committee, myself, Deputy Chair, councillor Antonelli, Mayor Theresa Harding, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnock, councillor Jacob Madsen on line, and councillor Augustine. I have no apologies, we're all here today. Acknowledgement of country, Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Next item on the agenda is a declaration of matters, a declaration of interest in matters on the agenda. Does anyone have any declarations? Because I have, I have, I have to make a declaration. And it's to do with item, item two. And that, that is Ipswich City Council Membership of Healthy Land and Water 2024 to 2025. Healthy Land and Water was formed by the combining of Healthy Waterways and SEQ catchments in 2016. I am a former board member of Healthy Waterways. I have no connection with Healthy Land and Water and I'm not a member. My CV says I was a board member of Healthy Waterways from 2012 to 2014, but it might be, it might be 2015, so about 10 years ago. So I need to make a declaration. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I, James Edward Madden, inform the meeting I have a declarable conflict of interest in item two, titled Ipswich City Council Membership of Healthy Land and Water 2024-2025. The nature of the declarable interest is I'm a former member of Healthy Waterways. The name of the related party is probably Healthy Land and Water. I have no relationship with Healthy Land and Water. The nature of the related party's interests, I have no interest, if I can say. And the value of gift, it doesn't apply to that one. There is just one other thing I wanted to mention, and it's the two questions that are asked of people in this situation. I am not an office bearer of Healthy Land and Water, and I would not receive any financial or personal benefit from a decision made on this matter today. So.
Through you, Chair. I would like to move that councillor Jim Madden participates and votes on item two, titled Ipswich City.
I think we have to leave, the Chair is making a declaration, he has to then let us know whether he wants to voluntarily leave or we'll leave it to the councillors. Sorry.
Well, I, I think I'll leave it to the councillors, ma'am. And so councillor Johnock, if you could continue.
Sorry. I got excited.
Not often we do this, ma'am.
I move that councillor Jim Madden participates and votes on item number two, titled Ipswich City Council Membership to Healthy Land and Water 2024 to 2025, because I don't believe he has any personal interests or financial benefits, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in public interest.
Thank you. Do I have a second now?
I'm happy to sit. Sorry.
Councillor Antonelli seconded that. Well, does anyone want to ask me any questions? If not, I'll put it to a vote, those in favour. And I should note that I'm not all in, actually, I'll say who's voting, I presume councillor Madsen is agreeable to me staying, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Councillor Madsen.
Voting in the affirmative.
Good, thank you. So councillor Madsen, councillor Augustine, councillor Johnock, councillor Antonelli, councillor, Mayor Theresa Harding voted in favour of me staying, and I did not vote. Good, thanks everyone. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Business outstanding, there's nil, nil business outstanding. Next item, first item is confirmation of minutes. Confirmation of minutes of the Environment and Sustainability Committee number 2024/04, of the 3rd of September 2024. Do I have a mover? Councillor Antonelli has seconded, councillor Johnock. The recommendation is the minutes of the Environment and Sustainability Committee held on the 3rd of September 2024 be confirmed. All in favour? Councillor Johnock, all in favour. And councillor Madsen? Councillor Madsen?
Voting in the affirmative.
Good, thank you. So all in favour. Next item is officers' reports. And the first item we're dealing with is Ipswich City Council Membership of Healthy Land and Water 2024-2025. This is a report concerning Ipswich City Council and Regional Natural Resource Management Group for South East Queensland, being Healthing Land and Water, specifically the current and future membership and funding arrangements which have been under review for two consecutive years, and the value it offers to councils, council, Ipswich City Council. Does anyone have any questions of the council officer? Councillor Antonelli does. I'll ask council officer Kay, Kay Cavanagh, to come forward. I have a couple of questions, but councillor Antonelli, if you want to go first. Could you just state your name and position, Kay?
Kay Cavanagh, General Manager, Environment Sustainability.
Yes, just my questions obviously relate to the fact that we've, we've had a relatively long history with the precursor to this current body being Healthy Waterways. So what is the critical difference between the two of them, and why is it that we don't get the same level, same sorts of benefits that we once did?
The main difference between Healthy Waterways and Healthy Land and Water was the amalgamation that Healthy Waterways had with the SEQ catchments. I don't have the exact year when that occurred, it would have been probably around 2016. And that formed then the one regional NRM body. Previously, that was two separate NRM bodies. So they came together under that constitution at that point in time. They've essentially continued to offer the same services that both entities did previously. So Healthy Waterways were primarily around the monitoring of the region's waterways in Moreton Bay, and the annual report card. So they still produce an annual report card. And SEQ catchments were a lot more about on-ground delivery and services to community groups, for example. So they continue to offer those services across SEQ. With our partnership membership payment each year really goes towards that ecological monitoring programme. That has changed over the last few years, where previously it was quite regular monitoring of our waterways. That has been reduced somewhat over the years, and is at such a scale that it doesn't necessarily inform our on-ground delivery of where we are currently with our waterway health strategy deliverables. So the proposal is that we would seek to do a more localised water monitoring programme, that would inform our decision-making at a local level. And that's where our membership payment is. It doesn't mean that we can't continue to have conversations and work with Healthy Land and Water on other projects, or engage them for delivery of other programmes. This is more about our contribution to that regional water quality monitoring programme each year.
So as I read it at the moment, it's about £100,000 per annum?
Roughly around £100,000, yes, yeah.
Yeah, which doesn't make up much of their formal budget. So we're probably not necessarily that important a contributor to them if we're less than 1% of their budget. But my question, I guess, is what do we lose if we don't, if we're not a member of the organisation? Is there something critical that we do lose? I guess, just to give a bit of a precursor in where I'm coming from, I'm a touch reluctant to just move away from an organisation. And whilst $100,000 would be good to be spent anywhere else perhaps, I'm just a bit worried that once the gates shut, we may lose certain data, access to data and information that may be critical for us going forward, et cetera, et cetera.
That's a good question. What we would lose, we'd have some voting and participation in some of their committees. So there is a monitoring and evaluations during committee. We would no longer have membership on, on that. So the decision-making around the likes of the report card and the monitoring programme. In saying that, though, those programmes are fairly consistent, because they're guided by the scientific expert panel on the parameters that you do, and how regularly do you monitoring. So that would still continue irrespective of our, whether we're a member or not. As from a data perspective, whatever's public, we would still have access to through their, their portal, their website. But a lot of the data is at that regional scale, which hasn't really been used to inform our localised decision-making. And that's where we see better benefit in doing our own programme, that would be more localised and tell us exactly what's happening in our local waterways.
So they also do, you know, patrols and clean-ups of our waterways. Will that stop?
No, we can still continue to do that. So we.
That's we, or?
Council as a, essentially that's a service provision. So we enter into a contract for that service provision. We went to the market last year, and we did engage another contractor to do that provision last year. So we're able to still, still do that if, if they are the best, through a procurement process, if they're the best tenderer for that project, we can still do that.
And have we had discussions with other councils regarding the same thing, who may be members of Healthy Land and Waterways? Because if we walk away, we are essentially one of the bigger councils.
Yep.
Because I imagine Brisbane's a member of it as well, aren't they?
Most SEQ councils are members, but there are a number of councils that are reviewing similar to what we have done, their membership moving forward. And I am aware of some that are considering moving away from their membership, but I'm unable to sort of talk to that publicly, as those councils still going through that process. But are aware that other councils are reviewing their membership as well.
I was going to suggest, if we're going into the, an area of going into a closed session, probably under, to discuss some of these matters.
Maybe for the sake of, if we've got someone in the gallery, that maybe we should move on to the next item and then come back to this if we're going to close.
I think she probably wants to.
I guess, I guess.
If I could. The, the member of the public gallery will be here for the entire amount, she'll, she'll be staying on.
Councillor Antonelli, I think you're kind of drifting into what we're hearing, or what might happen, rather than actual.
I actually have some information on that, instead of the county. So if I propose that we go into a closed session, as per section 254J, G of, 3G of the local government regulations, we're negotiating with a, relating to a commercial matter involving a local government, for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government.
All right, ma'am. And do I have a second after that?
Yeah.
Councillor Antonelli. All right, unfortunately we're.
Put that to the vote.
Oh, sorry. All in favour?
Checking with councillor Madsen.
And Madsen. You all right there, Jacob?
Yep, in the affirmative.
Good, thank you. Well, that's all in favour, so we're going to a closed session. Harrison, if you can just tell us when we're live? I just want to let you know, Rosemary, we waited till you came back in before we proceeded with the meeting. Okay. Well, the motion, the motion is, the recommendation, recommended motion is that council resolves to cease this membership of Healthy Land and Water, and no longer make an annual financial membership payment. And I should mention, we went into closed session because there was confidential information to be discussed about this matter. Now, I just need a mover. Councillor Johnock, can I second her? Mayor, Mayor Theresa Harding. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
If I may, my, council's needs have changed, I think, over the years, since this partnership was, was inked and made tremendous inroads. And we are likely to require greater monitoring and greater evaluation to inform future investment. In its current form, these needs cannot be met by the ecosystem health monitoring programme. Last month, we approved our council's funding contribution towards the $40 million Resonant Rivers Initiative, which, as part of the SEQ city deals, which puts SEQ councils and the state and the federal governments as the decision-makers on how that combined funding will be invested in our catchments rather than outsourcing it. We still have the opportunity to, to outsource to Healthy Land and Water. So you're certainly not backing away from our commitment to our waterways and catchments. In fact, we're increasing our investment and increasing our commitment. This report demonstrates that we need to invest where there is the most value for money for our ratepayers by providing local ongoing improvement and monitoring to scale which provides meaningful feedback to guide targeted future investment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? If no further discussion, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour of the motion? Thank you. That's unanimous. Jacob?
Affirmative.
Good, thank you. Carried. Now, the next item on the agenda is item three, board appointments for Greenavate Proprietary Limited. Now, in accordance with section 254J3I of the Local Government Regulation 2012, I move that the meeting move into closed session to discuss item three, titled Board Appointments. So Greenavate Proprietary Limited, non-confidential report. Do I have a second now? Councillor Johnock, thank you.
In discussion, I just want to be clear that we will be discussing the personal profit details of candidates and this recruitment process, so that's why it's confidential.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favour? Unanimous, Jacob?
Affirmative.
Good, thank you. So we've, Rosemary, we have to move. Good, thank you. So we've, Rosemary, we have to move. Um. Got notes in the white paper?
Yeah, obviously voting the affirmative to come out of close.
Oh, good thing. Thanks, Jacob. Um, committee members, we've come out of closed session where we, we moved into closed session because we had confidential information to discuss. Um. Does somebody want to recommend, um, does somebody want to move the motion, um, as per, as per the screen? If councillor Johnick and seconded by Mayor Theresa Harding. Good. Um, all in favour?
Oh, any discussion?
Oh, well, sorry, ma'am, I keep forgetting. Yep, yes, ma'am, you've got the floor.
No, I'm not going to say anything.
Oh, okay, any discussion, any discussion? No, good. Um, uh, all in favour? No, no, I won't forget Jacob this time. Jacob?
Affirmative.
Affirmative, good. Passed.
How's that beer going, Jack?
Yeah, 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 he's got his feet up. Well, that's the end of the councillors' reports. No, there's no notices of motion. There's no matters arising. Um, meeting closed at, uh, four forty-five. Woo-hoo.
Thank you, Rosemary.